The time is now 7:00 PM. I'll call this special meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council to order. Please arise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
This is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do not have any condolences this evening, but if you could please all join me for a moment of silence for all of our veterans who have passed here in Bridgewater. Thank you. Okay, first item up is announcements for the President. I will just read a short, something that I prepared for you all. I know that some of you may be here for the MBTA Communities Discussion, and we're looking forward to your comments tonight and in the future, but I just wanted to just bring some clarity. Some of you may be here tonight regarding the proposed zoning ordinance related to our MBTA Communities Compliance. I wanted to clarify that this item is not on our Town Council Agenda this evening. It has been formally referred to Committee and will become before us likely in September, at which time we will hold a public hearing. I strongly encourage your participation in the public hearing at that time. In the meantime, I encourage everybody to take time to understand what density actually looks like. Our existing form-based code already allows for densities that are well above and beyond that is what is shown in the MBTA application. In fact, adjusting the application to include a cap would directly conflict with our current zoning. To put in perspective, a standard three-family home, a very common style of housing that we have here downtown, particularly in this area, results in a density of over thirty units per acre. This obviously depends on how big that lot is, but this is quite typical for our area and within the character of what many of us consider to be normal housing. I want everybody to continue to stay engaged in the process, and if you'd like to attend the Committee Meeting, the CED and Planning Board will be meeting later this month, Wednesday, August 20th, and then, as I said, we will likely have a Town Council Meeting to vote on this legislation later on in September. And that's all that I have for announcements. We will now move on to Citizen Open Forum. Due to open meeting law requirements, rather, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate responses to questions or concerns will be given by the Town Manager at a future Town Council Meeting. Anyone may come up at this time and comment up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Janet Hansen, Pleasant Street. Just have a few things. Hopefully, it's within the three minutes. I see that the water rates are going to be discussed, and I didn't look up to see what the water rates are now, so when you discuss it, if you can tell us, so we can compare just for the residents, what the water rate is now, so we can see how it compares to the $42.23 that's being proposed. I forgot to look at what my water bill was. And I want to comment on the Order FY26-013 to create an ad hoc forensic audit committee. I'm in favor of that. I think it's a good idea, and it's start to regain trust from the citizens if we can have that, regardless of what the results show. If the results show everything's hunky-dory, that's great. If it finds something that we can fix, that's even better. But I hope it's approved, and if it all goes well, maybe it will allow us to have more forensic audit for things that are in question. So I don't see any harm in doing it. So I would also like to find out, I can't remember why former manager Mr. Dutton had switched from town control to have somebody else handle the golf course, so I would like to hear if somebody has that information as to why that even transpired and how does that save us money? So I've always wondered that. So that would be great. I also want to reemphasize that citizen comments should be allowed at all Committee Members' agendas. It should be on their agendas. Not every agenda has a spot for citizen comments, so it allows them not to ask for citizen comments, and I think it's important. I know everybody says they don't have to do it, but it is written in the Charter or the Town Administrator that it's a potential, you know, you can do it, and the state even encourages it. So what's the harm? Put it on the agenda so that we can do it. CONCOM is one that, and Planning Board, that don't have it on there, but as long as they do ask you if you have any comments on what they're discussing while they're discussing it, that's good, but to have it on the agenda would be great. And they also, you know, just to be able to have that opportunity to speak. And technology? I don't know what it is, and I know somebody else doesn't have it. I've lost my raise the hand feature on those meetings. I can't always chat. The chats are closed, that you can't chat, but in order for me to raise my hand, I actually have to unmute myself and say, "Hi, I'm here." So I don't know why, but I know there's some other people that we've lost the raise the hand feature. Somebody can look into that. That'd be great. And the other thing is on Fridays, I know the Town Hall's closed at 1:00, but when the taxes are due on a Friday, we should extend the hours to make it easier for people. I know everybody can go the next day or put it in the box, but, you know, one Friday wouldn't hurt to be open later if you're going to have taxes due on the day, which is a Friday. So those are some of my comments right now.
We're at time, Mrs. Hanson. Thank you.
Yep, so thank you. Those three minutes go pretty fast.
Brad McKinnon, 86 Spring Street. So I just drove around town for half an hour to make sure all this is still relevant. These are items that would have been on my list if I was still on that side. These are questions that, not all of them should be asked publicly, but they should be asked within this building. I'm going to start off with Flag Street. Are we going to get a new water line or just paving over it and ripping up a new road within five years? It's already been brought up that before 2030, a line would need to be replaced on that street on one of the town's presentations. Staying on Flag Street, I'm going to move to Rainbow's End. This was my last Town Manager update I asked for, and I was told it was going out to bid. That's probably eight, nine months ago. Just wondering what's going on there. Summer Street Park, not trying to talk down on any contractors or anything, but what's going on there? I mean, it doesn't really seem like a job site. There are machines and trucks there, but nothing's really getting done. And I mean, hopefully, their excavator isn't dead in their morning because they left their lights on today. Grove Street, are we just going to leave the Jersey barriers to block the street? Doesn't really help prevent cars going up and down that one way. That is new, and I mean, the day before Thanksgiving, most of you guys know, I almost got taken out by a drunk driver pulling out of there, so it is kind of a dangerous intersection. The center of town, Public Safety, just questions. Why can't I cross the street? A Bridgewater Credit Union and Mechanics and Kingswood say for them crossing in the center. Why can college kids cross the street safer at the Plymouth Street train crossing? We've got two new flashing lights in the center, but we can't get the ones that only flash when people hit the button to cross. Constant flashing lights help no one. Styles &amp; Hart, lower parking lot needs curb cuts slash what's going on with that property? Maybe CPA money, looking into that. APC on High Street, I'm not fond of the owner myself, but like everything else, my ears hear more than XM radio, and I've heard many good things of what the owner of said property has done for this town. It's not right to not take care of those who take care of us. And wrapping up, if you've been on this board for over a year and don't have one resolution ordinance with your name on it, ask yourself, "Why am I wasting my time and even worse, the taxpayers' time?" You're elected to not just say yes or no, you're supposed to bring in ideas to the table to better the town. Thank you, guys. Have a great rest of your summer.
Thank you, Brad.
Elizabeth Sharp, 1000 South Street. I'm disappointed in the outcome of the special election, and I'm here to advocate that we continue to work together, moving forward for a better community and for our school district. The outcome of the override election means our school district's budget per student will remain at the very bottom, number 281 out of 288 regular districts in Massachusetts. So please don't ignore the data that shows we are not providing a school budget that is even close to satisfactory, seventh lowest in the state. Is that something as councilors you are proud to defend? Bridgewater, Massachusetts, seventh lowest funded schools in Massachusetts. I truly hope all nine of you sitting here tonight are not proud of this data. If our poor people's spending was even close to the state average and the schools were still in trouble, I can see why you might feel the need to question every decision that the school committee is making, but that is not the case. I urge you to approve the school budget on the table tonight, to barely scrape by this year, and let's move forward, working to increase our district's funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak?
I am Tom Morigi, 20 Ledgewood Drive, Bridgewater, also Bridgewater Recreation Commission. I have some other form. Now, is the golf course going to be brought up tonight? Was there any memos about the golf course being brought up tonight about the management team and so forth? No? Okay. All right, thank you. Sorry, sorry.
And would anyone else like to come up and speak?
Even though Jim Campbell on 154 Laurel Street, Bridgewater, even though golf courses are being brought up tonight since I'm here, I'm wondering how, since a golf course is an enterprise fund, and all of the money from an enterprise fund can be put in the general account, how can you have the people running it for 20 years pay off the mortgage, pay everything so the town doesn't pay a nickel, and then you, once you're all done with it, you give it out to a company and the money they give back to the town you can keep? Isn't that the same as taking it from an enterprise fund? Number one. Second question, I just heard rumors, but was the contract extended by five years just a few days before the Town Manager left? Do we get reports like you're supposed to, monthly reports? We ask for reports and we can't find them. The Recreation, last time you got a report?
We don't get it. We get nothing.
And it's kind of funny that the Town Manager was responsible for hiring, firing, and fees at the golf course and everything, and then they can complain about, I don't know what they complain about, but anyway, the company takes over 20. 20 was the most improvement in golf anywhere. Went up 20% everywhere, so of course, the golf course in Massachusetts, golf course made more money and everything like that. But there's things that happen, like I don't see the benefit to the town. People were playing, and I think they were paying $1,000 a month, and the contract says you only go up 3%, so if it went up, it'd be $1,030 unless someone sends a letter to the Town Manager, and if he don't answer that, I guess you can go up to what you want because it's, I think it's $2,000 something now, which is a lot more than 3%. Used to run a lot of things for kids, used to give a lot of lessons, clinics. The league on Thursday night was a good deal, and now it just seems to be a money-making venture. I think all the rates went up. There's far as, there's no like rate for a Bridgewater person to take a membership and stuff, so I'll save the rest for when the golf course does come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And just to clarify, nothing specifically on the golf courses tonight, but there is discussion of a forensic audit, which may include the golf course, so we're not discussing the golf course specifically, but I just wanted to make sure you guys had the right information.
No, I agree, and I know you don't answer questions, so I figure if I tell you tonight, then maybe next time, when it does go on, you'll have answers to the questions. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I also just add, could the Recreation Board be invited? Anything with the, it's like when it went private two years ago, we were never involved in it, and the course falls under the Recreation Department, and we had nothing to do with it. So if you do talk about it, I'd like to see if we can at least get our hands around it, that we know, you know, if it does fall under Recreation, and we have no say at this time on it. And I think, I think we're losing, we're losing a lot, and we don't get any of the numbers, nothing, nothing comes to us. So I'm not sure who's watching the numbers, but we're not getting them. So thank you again, and we look forward for some communication so we know when to come to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak?
Hi, my name is Peggy Farrell. My husband and I have lived in Bridgewater for 45 years, moved from one end of town onto Boxwood Lane, and our son lives here as well. Wonderful town, wonderful people. I just feel like we've lost our way. I just feel like we're a nice little country town, and all of a sudden, we're just in flux. We had wonderful teachers. All of a sudden, we don't have teachers enough for the students. My 12-year-old grandson is scared to death that he's not going to have a teacher, and they feel like they have to move out of town just to make ends meet. Our taxes have escalated to the point where we're on Social Security, and I don't know how we can stay. Our water bills escalate, our services diminish, and I feel like there's a lot of people behind me that wonder, "How can we add any more people with all these units that we're talking about?" I'm hearing about things I didn't even know were happening in the town, and that's my own fault, but I just feel like, "How can we add more students when we don't have teachers? How can we add more families when our water is cut to the point that everyone wants, everything's dying all around us?" I don't think it's a good representation for our town. I think we could be so much more, but what's the plan for the water and sewer to try to make this town beautiful as it was 45 years ago? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jack Brace. I live on Pine Street. My street has been done over, resurfaced, and it has a double yellow line on my street, which means no passing. I've seen cars go down my street more than 85 miles an hour. They go so fast that when I'm looking at my, out my bay window, I see the car here, and I go to the other window to look down the street, and the car's already gone. It's terrible. What I'd like to see on my road is speed bumps, where they put them on Elm Street in East Bridgewater or West Bridgewater. I'd like to see something like that, probably four or five of them. The speed limit is 30 miles an hour in my street. It's sickening. I'm surprised people haven't got killed on my street, but somebody will, and I wonder if they'll do something then. You gotta put some, tires very cheap. You know, take one load of tire and put five or six pumps in, or put a cop on the street. I've only seen one policeman give a ticket on my street. I've been there 14 years. That's a long time. No tickets. If they ticketed, if they ticketed the people speeding on my street, they could probably put a bunch of teachers on the schools. You know, it's crazy. And you could put some police on too, or firemen. You know, we gotta do something to save lives. It's sad. I'm really sick of it.
Thank you.
That's Pine Street. Don't get it wrong, please.
Council Strickles lives on Pine Street. Would anyone else like to come up and speak? Okay, thank you all for coming up to speak tonight. We'll now move on to our next agenda item, which is hearings. We have Order FY26-010, post-override supplemental appropriation. This is a public hearing. This was advertised in the July 21st, 2025 Enterprise. Our Finance Committee voted 6-0 to recommend at their July 21st meeting. This hearing's been duly advertised in the July 21st, 2025 Enterprise. The Town Council voted 9-0 at our previous meeting on July 14th to retain this order at the Town Council level, so we could all proceed forward with the hearing tonight. It is now 7:21, and I will open the hearing. I will defer over to our Town Manager, Mr. Casanova-Davis. If you could just give us a little bit of overview over what we have before us, and also maybe speak a little bit to what the School Committee met on last night, so that we could all assure residents that we're moving forward with a approved budget for our schools.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just to clarify what the School Committee did last evening, last evening, the School Committee decided to reduce the assessments for Bridgewater Radam regarding capital. Just a little bit of sort of backstory there. Typically, what the town has done is, in the fall, they've generally funded capital. You know, because we were in a 1/12 budget, DESI and U.R. became involved. Technically, we wouldn't have an approved budget if we did that practice that we did previously. So in order to make sure that our numbers were aligned with Rainham's, excuse me, with the regional school districts and Rainham's as well on their town meeting this evening, the School Committee had to reduce their assessment for capital, knowing full well that we are going to address capital in the fall as we typically have done. So it's not reducing our assessment, it's not, it's just making sure our numbers are aligned, and that way, we don't have to do a 1/12 budget. Hopefully, Rainham's town meeting approves their increased assessment this year, and obviously, if the Council does that, then we would be aligned and they would have approved budget. So there's the clarification there. In terms of the post-override supplemental appropriation, this does meet the additional, around $850,000 for that additional appropriation. As I mentioned before in the council meeting previously, the proposal is to take $450,000 for Employee Liability Stabilization Fund. The reason why we're making that decision is because that fund generally funds employee vacation and sick buybacks when there's retirements or terminations. The town has prudently reduced our liability there, so we felt comfortable taking those funds from there. And then, when we do have additional free cash, when we do free cash, it's considered one-time sources of revenue that are in excess of additional revenue or savings in departmental budgets, so we can replenish that fund in the fall. And then, we do make some other ancillary changes with positions, position reductions or freezes for the year. Give us time to evaluate that as part of the fiscal year '27 budget. That's where we're at, and then obviously, if you have any questions, we can address them.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask if there are any general questions from the public that would like to come up and speak? Seeing none, would anyone from the public like to come up and speak in favor?
Thank you, President Loretty, and thanks the Council for working with us so diligently and in such a good partnership over the last stoked while. Tim Fitzgibbon, it's 238 South Drive. Sorry, I forgot that part. So just to update you a little bit from the Town Manager's update, Rainham's town meeting is done. They did pass what we passed last night, so, you know, we're obviously, being on the School Committee, I'm hoping you vote to pass this as well. So I'm in favor of it, and I urge you all to be in favor of it. Rainham clearly was in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Would anyone like, anyone else like to come up and speak in favor? Seeing no more, would anyone else from the public like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, and now I'll open it up to fellow councilors if they have any questions or comments, discussion on, or what's before us. Council Murphy?
Through you to the Town Manager, very obvious question, taking money from a one-time stabilization fund is not a long-term solution. Can you speak to how you'll address that need or gap that we have now in our budget moving forward, knowing that the School Committee did not meet the desired outcome that I think people had hoped for, that they'll likely come back again next year, asking possibly for an increase again? We have now a gap in our budget, taking from a one-time stabilization. How are we planning to address that, and what does that look like over the course of the next year?
Yeah, it's a great question. Before I do that, I do want to just also say, you know, I appreciate the collaboration with Superintendent Powers as part of this process. I think this is part of the fiscal year '27 budget process. We definitely are going to have some difficult decisions by utilizing a source of revenue that is non-recurring by using a stabilization fund. You are, you are, it's not an ideal situation for someone in Finance. I think one thing for me and the team, when we discussed this, was we were looking at this holistically. This decision was made, you know, the day before I started, and based on the time that we had, which was 45 days, we felt this was the most prudent way to fund that additional appropriation. But one of the commitments that I have, the commitment that we have as a team, is we're going to look at this organizational efficiency review, we're going to dive into the budget, and we're going to just roll up our sleeves and, you know, sharpen the pencils and get to work on the budget process. So that starts early, and it starts a lot earlier than what we've done previously. So, you know, I think we're also working with some of our sort of collective bargaining groups and realizing opportunities to realize savings in our budget this year. So I think we're going to do this looking throughout this fiscal year and more so for the fiscal year '27 budget, coming up with proposals that make sure that we can fund our schools properly, but also fund our town operations properly as well.
Thank you. Questions or comments from other councilors? Council Lindy?
Through you to the Town Manager. I just want to commend you and the Finance Team for coming up with a creative solution. This is not, obviously, what we want to do all the time, starting early. I know there's been an ad hoc committee, which Council Strickles and Council Loretty were on with two members of Rainham and two members of the School Committee. Hopefully, they'll meet on a regular basis with the Budget Subcommittee or the School Committee, so next year, we can find a way to do better somehow. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to first thank you, Council Murphy. That was the exact question that I was going to ask. It's a fantastic question. I appreciate the Town Manager working with us on this and trying to sort this out. I know this started prior to you being here. Through my own discussions with you, I would like to give you the chance to work on this and to work the problem out. I'm generally opposed to using stabilization funds that are for a revolving problem, and we are going to continue to have this problem. I would like to see continued work with the School Committee to try to sort out some of this funding. The town did vote against funding for the override, so I think we are doing what we need to do and try to work within our means, which unfortunately means some cuts here. But I will give the Town Manager the chance to work on this, and the ability to replenish those funds, which is a high priority for me because they are stabilization funds. So while I initially voiced the concern and lack of support for using those funds after discussions with you, I'm willing to give you a chance to work on this and to do that. I appreciate all the work you're doing, and I support this currently, based on what we see today, but if we are still sitting here in a year from now, I will be here. I will not continue support for stabilization funds to fund a revolving problem. These are problems that need to be solved. The town voted on this. This is no different than your own personal budget at home. You only have so much money coming in and so many things you can pay and buy, pay for, buy, and expenditures that you can take on. So we need to work on that. I think this is the first step for us to work on that, and as much as I don't like doing it this way, I wish there was another way. I don't see a current ulterior option for this, and I'll support this this time, and that's kind of the way and where I'm sitting on this, so thank you.
Thank you, Council Kennedy. Any other comments from councilors? Council Ellenberg?
Yes, Mr. Casanova-Davis, I would like to thank you for coming to a solution that kind of keeps things together, not perfectly certainly, but keeps things together somewhat. And later on, we're going to be discussing how to increase revenues. Am I right? In terms of water and sewer rates and things of that nature? So revenues to offset the deficit.
I think just for clarification there, water and sewer are enterprise funds, and they are separate from the general fund. But yeah, as we discuss water and sewer rates, I think we'll be addressing how we are raising, you know, additional revenue to address the you know, additional revenue to address the infrastructure needs that we have in those respective funds, but a little different from our general fund. But yes, we will be discussing that this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you. In agreeing with Mr. Kennedy, I also agree that we shouldn't be using stabilization funds for operational expenses, but this is a special circumstance at this point in time and this is our bridge to kind of get through this fiscal year. We're going to run into this obviously this time next year. So I do want to give Mr. Casanova Davis the opportunity to work his management with the budget. But again, you can only get so much blood from a stone. We are still desperately short of funds as a town and desperately short of funds as a school district. So again, the handwriting is on the wall. There will be talk of another override again this time next year. You can count on that. But the work needs to be done now to show that, you know, the schools are spending money that, you know, in an appropriate way. There's going to be a lot of work and transparency in the coming months to probably show that. And if that is shown, we can convince the public that the money, you know, is being spent appropriately, then I'm hoping the public will get behind potentially supporting an override down the line because there's nowhere else the funds are going to come from except from the residents of the towns of Bridgewater and Rainham. But I am totally in favor of the supplement budget this evening. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from counselors? Seeing none. So just for me, Counsel Kennedy put it as well as I could have said it, so I won't repeat what he said. I'm willing to give our town manager the opportunity to work collaboratively with us and I want to put this on the shoulders of the council because I think that managing the budget and working with the town manager is our greatest responsibility as a legislative body. So while we'll work collaboratively with our town manager and finance department, the directive inevitably comes from us. So we need to make sure that we do that in a collaborative way. And while I'm not, while I'm not in favor of using stabilization funds, I think this is the best way to do it. I'm looking forward to continuing to work on the ad hoc committee with Counsel Strickles and we'll revisit that with the school district to see if there's another way that we should be doing that, but those conversations are continuing. We are already, we already have meetings set for this summer, so those conversations for FY twenty-seven, they're already going to start because as we've all kind of noted here that this is not a problem that's going away anytime soon and we need to continue to work collaboratively to figure out what's best for our town and for our residents and for our students. So while I was initially in opposition to this, it's something that we need to do on behalf of our students. Our teachers cannot take any more cuts, so I think this is the best path forward that we have right now. So with that being said, I will close.
No, I was going to make a motion to approve.
Oh, yeah. So I need to close the hearing.
Oh, sorry.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Just on what you said there.
Sure.
You referenced an ad hoc committee and I believe Counsel Lindy referenced an ad hoc committee, but there isn't actually an ad hoc committee.
Yeah, we're using the wrong word. It's a working group that the superintendent set up. So we're using ad hoc committee, but it's a working group the superintendent's set up through their body and then invited counselors to participate.
Yeah, I was going to save this for the committee section, but the next meeting for that, they are open to the public. They are always posted because at any given time, there may be a quorum of counselors there. And ultimately, the next meeting is August fourteenth at six P.M. at the Bridgewater Middle School at the superintendent's office. So anyone that is out there right now is more than welcome to join. There is not, and this is the purview of the superintendent, there is not a public comment period unless it's on the agenda and typically it's not. So if you have something that you would like brought up, you can speak to Counsel Loretty or myself about that prior and we'll definitely add it to our agenda items.
Thank you for that. Counsel Kennedy?
Yeah, I'll just make this quick. I agree with Counsel Perry's assessment of where we're going to be later on down the road. I think we will be looking at another override in our future based on the way our budget is and the funding currently for the school. This body sent a resolution to the school committee requesting certain things be addressed. So when it comes to looking at a potential override down the road, I hope the specific items that we sent over there that we find pertinent and we hear from constituents are going to be addressed. I'm hopeful that they will take that path and I'm looking forward to the meeting that they have set up with the group, but not confident that they, that that may address some of the concerns that we brought to them. So I'm hoping that if it doesn't, then another avenue can be taken to build that trust in the public because again, like I said, we will be here again. So thank you.
Thank you.
I just, just to push back a little bit, maybe we can ask counsel for this, but if you and Counsel Strickles are representing the town council, I feel like there should be a process in that. Not that you're the wrong ones, but and I'm happy to sponsor whatever legislation we need. I just feel like we're circumventing a process by sending two representatives to speak on behalf of the council that weren't either appointed or elected to do so. I don't know. I'm asking your opinion, please formally.
I tend to agree with you. I think that the body politic would have to select the people to take part in something that they are acting as representatives on behalf of the group. If they're acting as citizens within a school district, that's a different analysis. But if they're acting as a representative of your body, your body should be the one selecting them.
Counsel Perry?
Yeah, I would agree with that, Simon, in the sense that this original group was set up kind of informally to discuss the, you know, the development of an override at the time. Obviously, they're keeping this group together now going forward with, you know, again, looking at additional things to work on in conjunction with both towns' boards and the school committee itself. So I would agree with Counsel Murphy that to formalize this at some point in time, maybe obviously within the next couple of meetings, if this is a group that's going to continue going forward, we should definitely formalize the process, nominate some membership of our town council here and make this an official situation.
Yeah, we are in a new fiscal year and because this was set up from the superintendent's side of things, we could have that discussion with him and those folks involved and see what's the best path forward for this next budget cycle. So this is kind of outside the purview of this body right now, but we could, you know, open up that conversation and see where that goes. But I'm glad that we'll continue that work, whoever is going to be on that body formally. And then as Counsel Strickles said, we're all invited to be there in attendance and I encourage everybody to do that that is able to. Any further comments before we close this out?
One question, Counsel Strickles. Are the committee committees on the, would it be on the Bridgewater website or is it going to be on the school when you guys meet?
It's usually on the school district's website and sometimes it's been posted on the town's website, but almost always. Yeah, I'll ask them.
Okay. I had some residents ask me and I wasn't sure. Thank you.
If there's nothing further, I will close the hearing. It is now seven thirty-eight and I believe Mr. Lindy has a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Order Zero FY twenty-six zero one zero, post-override supplemental appropriation.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we will now move on to town manager's report.
Right. Good evening again. Just quick updates for boards, commissions and committees. Today, we posted on our website, we have a, it's the same page on our website, but boards and commissioners, we've outlined the various vacancies that we have for our various boards and commissions and they're updated as of today. I particularly want to make a point, say that we have two vacancies for the, for the citizen advisory committee and that's obviously a very important committee. It helps make sure other volunteers and residents in the community are considered for the other boards and commissions. So I just wanted to make a point of saying, please volunteer, please take time to take a look at that page and see if there's any opportunities to volunteer your time to the town. So that's that for the boards and commissions and committees.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So I ran into one of the members of the open space committee and they need members too. They haven't been able to meet for a while, so I just wanted to put that on your radar. I promised them I would do a public service announcement at the council meeting for them.
One thing that, you know, I've tried to join, and this will be over time through year, but I've joined some various committees and to just introduce myself, you know, get to know, and we have had some quorum issues. So yeah, we're encouraging people to take the opportunity to volunteer and serve and help the community move forward. So yeah, take a look at our boards and commissions The next item is a community engagement update. I briefly mentioned this at our last council meeting. I plan to host a couple of listening sessions, meeting greets. We have a couple of dates scheduled. One, and we will put this on our website and our social media, but one will be August twentieth, ten thirty at the senior center. And then we're going to have another one at August twenty-fifth at five here at the academy building. You know, this is an opportunity, you know, to meet with me. I want to hear directly from you. I've heard, you know, concerns. I've heard, you know, ideas to move the community forward. I want you to know. I want to listen to you. I want your engagements. It's important to me. So I will host sort of on a monthly basis, open town manager office hours as well and so we'll publicize that moving more forward. In addition to that, we started a website survey. The town is transitioning the website to another company. That work had already begun before I started here, but, you know, I've heard, especially some of the meeting greets that we had, that, you know, the website needed to take a look at accessibility, search functions, so forth. So we want to hear your feedback because it will directly help how our new website is. And then in the fall, we'll do another residential survey. We'll have more information regarding that moving forward, but those are my quick updates there.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or requests from counselors of our town manager? Mr. Lindy?
Thank you. Through you to the town manager. So before your time with the previous town manager, I had inquired about a fire hydrant outside of the town hall that had a red flag on it. The response to it has been, it's been removed completely. So my question is, what fire protection does this building have now that that fire hydrant's been removed? They told me at the time, after multiple requests, that it required that the street be cut and the line was going across the street and, you know, that being Route eighteen, it was a federal case to fix it. Well, now it's gone. So this building, a lot of time effort and money, historical money, CPA, everything was put into it. There's one across the street, but there was one right here and I just don't understand why it was removed. So I'd just like to somehow get an answer on that.
Thank you.
Through you to the town manager. This is just a common question that I get and it was even brought up this evening. So if you could, I would appreciate an update on Flag Street, where we're at, the timetable on it. It's one of, in my district, one of the most commonly asked questions that I get because the street is an absolute mess and everyone is very concerned about their cars. So just an update on that would be appreciated so that I can get that information back out to the people in my district and District Three. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ellenberg?
Yes, and I heard from several constituents about Whitman Street, that Whitman Street needs updating, that it is in horrific shape.
Thank you. Counsel Murphy?
One thing we discussed at the last meeting in realizing this is a special meeting, so it may not be why it's on there, but we discussed the MBTA complacency, whatever we want to call it. And we, I asked for a list of grants that either we received or will be receiving as a MBTA community so we can demonstrate either a benefit or if there's not a benefit, we can show that as well too. But I'd love to know that if we are in compliance, X amount of dollars is what we were able to get from that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to town manager. I'm not sure who's in charge of this. It was confusing and I looked at the Home Rule. The committees can come before us, but it doesn't really tell me who will ask them. So I'd like to know, do the president ask the committees to come before the town manager? Because I like to start seeing one at least a month because we haven't had any. We've requested quite a few. Thank you.
Anything further?
One more. Counsel Murphy, kind of jogged my memory on something else I wanted to ask. So at our last meeting, there was a connection made between MBTA zoning and the grant that was received for the Hanson Farm, that we would not receive that grant. I had multiple citizens ask the connection was on that. So if there is a direct connection to that grant, I would appreciate that. If it's just the state will stop funding grants for our town if we're not in compliance, that's a different situation. So I would just like some clarification on that if you're able to provide it or maybe the director of that department can provide that. But that was something that was brought up multiple times over the last week or so. Thank you.
Anything further? Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to legislation for action. First up is Order FY twenty-six dash zero zero seven, acceptance of gift. This is from the Lepeke Family Trust. Budget and finance, we met this evening and Counsel Murphy, we voted on this. You were, you were not there, so I'll give the update. We voted two zero to recommend. The finance committee voted six zero to recommend. Anything further from our town manager? I know that we've already discussed this, but anything further on this one?
Nope. We just appreciate the gift donation and, you know, we'll work with the finance team to see how we prudently utilize these funds for the community. So we really appreciate it.
Just to speak on behalf of myself and the council, we're very grateful again, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars to the town. This will be used for a number of different uses, library, library passes, community events, a number of other things that I can't remember at the top of my head, but we're very, very grateful and we thank the Lepeke Family Trust for that. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion for approval. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Motion passes. Okay, next up, Order FY twenty-six dash zero one one, FY twenty-six water rates. Budget and finance met this evening and I believe you were there for that one.
I was, yeah. We had a great detailed presentation at our last town council meeting regarding the waters and sewer rates. And so basically, the budget and finance committee looked at this and determined that it was appropriate. One comment that did come up is Counsel McGrath mentioned the impact that this could have on small businesses. And so we are looking a little bit deeper into who exactly would be impacted by which rates. And so I believe our town manager is going to follow up and get us a little bit more details on that. But nevertheless, the budget and finance committee did recommend three zero.
Thank you. And the finance committee voted six zero to recommend on their July twenty-first meeting. I'll entertain a motion for approval and discussion.
Second.
Thank you. And any discussion on this one, counselors?
The one thing that we did discuss was our town manager told us it's for one year and then he's going to look at it and see where we go from there. So I like that idea. Thank you.
Counsel Ellenberg?
Yes, what I like about this is that it has incentive for conservation because it is charging much more to those who are the big volume users. And so that gives incentive to curb one's water usage. So I think that this is very good. It will provide money for the enterprise fund and help us upgrade our equipment and also help us conserve water. So I'm all in favor of this.
Thank you.
Yep, I think that this is a pressing issue that we have all heard about and we were, had a great presentation at our last meeting. I think this is what we need to do. I don't like raising rates, but we have to fix our water system and that's just what we have to address, water and sewer, which will be coming up. So the only way to address that is through funding it and increasing the rates. The tiered system they explained, I think, works out very well. I think increasing the rates and the explanation as to the water connections and the investment or the money that those rates bring in was great. This also provides us a way to pay for things that we may need in the future, which is very important so we're not behind in ten years when we get there. I think that was a really critical part of this presentation that we received and what we're looking at doing. Just to address a question that was brought up earlier by a citizen, because I have the rates in front of me, currently for what I would consider to be a house at five eighths or three-fourths, that's, it's twenty-five dollars and that's going up to twenty-seven fifty. That's probably the average size on a house. A one-inch line to your house and meter is seventy-five dollars and that's going up to eighty-two fifty. So it's not an enormous increase and I think we saw the projections and where it's going to go and I think that we need to fix our water and sewer. So thank you.
Thank you.
One thing, our water department heads are here. If we could invite them up if they wanted to, you know, speak anymore about this or tell us something that maybe we don't know or questions that they've heard.
Yeah, do we have any questions for our DPW water department specifically?
Yes, I have a question. Out of our total water usage, how much does the college use out of the, because we are the host town? the host town and they are using our water. And how much do they use? Do they use a third? Do they use a quarter? Do they use half? I don't know. And I would really like if our water department could tell us that.
Come up to the mic.
I really don't know the exact percentages, but I can get that to the town manager and they can get it to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Town Manager.
I'm assuming that the council is going to take a vote soon. Two things here. One thing that I do want to highlight that I really think is important, that we sort of addressed at the last meeting, but the average residential combined bill with this change in structure is going to be saving or would be, is 7% lower than the previous structure, right? And that's important to realize. We do have a lot of water infrastructure needs and desires, obviously, and we have to pay for them. But with this adjustment in the structure, it is actually, you would, the average resident would be paying 7% less under this structure than they would in the former structure. So I think that's important to highlight. Second, I do want to just take a quick moment to just recognize Jonas, who is our water and sewer superintendent. He's retiring on August 13th and he's served the town for over 22 and a half years and so, and thank you.
Thank you. Speaking a little bit more to the, to the rates and Councilor Ellenberg, what she brought up is that this does shift, and correct me if I'm wrong, this does shift some of the liability to our larger users and that's how we're able to raise additional funds. People are going to say, how are we raising more money? But my bill isn't going up as, as much as that's because we're shifting some of the burden or more of the burden to some of our larger uses like, you know, like BSU and our larger commercial users of water. So that's why we're able to keep residential rates as low as we possibly can while at the same time raising money for our water enterprise fund so we can make those dire capital improvements that we, that we need to make. But as our town manager said, the increases are less than they would have been under the previous structure. Councilor Kennedy.
I actually just wanted to comment on that because I realized after I said it, $25 and $27 doesn't mean a whole lot to a whole lot of people. So for an average quarterly rate right now, if you're paying $88 in your quarterly, you would be going up to 102. If we were to move forward on this, your rate, if you were paying $88 again on a residential, you would go up to 97. So it's actually about $5 almost less for the average residential unit.
Thank you for that. With all that being said, oh, I'm going to put this to a vote. All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
May I ask you a question?
Not, can it, can it wait till citizen comments at the end? We were not able to take questions at this time.
Okay.
Thank you. Next up, we have Order FY 26-012, FY 26 Sewer Rates. Budget and Finance Meeting met earlier this evening. Councilor Murphy.
Yep, Budget and Finance voted 3-0 to recommend similar discussion and was included in the presentation last week.
Great. Yeah, and the Finance Committee voted 6-0 to recommend. With all that, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion for approval and then a second and for discussion.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. So any discussion on this ties in with our water rates, but just to speak to this a little bit, our sewer rates were a flat rate before, so this is a tiered system. Again, it's going to shift some of the burden to our heavier users. Before, everybody was paying, paying a flat rate, which was pretty outdated. So we're now moving to more of an updated rate, rate system for our sewer. But Councilor Lindy.
I was going to ask through you to the town manager if we could explain the rates and, because on the surface, it looked like a 20% increase, but it's actually similar to the water.
Sure.
I guess, so I'm understanding your question. Let me take a stab at it and see if I answer your question. So in the current structure, as the Prince, Council President Loretty said, we were all, all users, no matter what their meter size, we're paying a fixed rate of $60. In this proposed structure, it lines itself with our water and it's based on meter size, but volumetric usage as well. So for example, if you look at the current structure, a tier one user is $4.38 and our current structure and the new proposed structure is $4.06. So the actual rate for usage drops under this proposal because we do get some more revenue based on the fixed charges that are based on meter size. So what we are really associating with is equitable, right? Obviously, a larger meter generally more demand, et cetera. So the increase is larger in those, in those, those areas versus a 5/8 residential meter size. Question?
Yes. Any further discussion, Councilor Strickles?
I would just say that this, just like Councilor Kennedy reiterated with the water, this goes hand in hand with the water. If we don't combat our problems in a marathon-like maneuver, we're never going to fix them. And this is the best way to combat them now and to create a system that we can see if it works. And if it does work, amazing, and we keep, we keep it up. But knowing that it's going to be for this year, I think it's a good trial run because we have massive bills coming up with water and sewer that are collectively going to be very expensive for the town when we have to go and fix them. So better to get started on those things and I'm very appreciative for the presentation, being able to outline things in such a efficient manner where it's palatable, not only to us as councilors, but for residents alike.
Thank you. Any further discussion, councilors?
Just one more point. Last year, the water, the sewer rates went up 50%. So this is obviously a much better plan. It's a trial for one year and hopefully it'll work. I'm sure it will. And then we're off to a much better start.
Thank you.
President, one thing I would just add as well, you know, this group and our team is really committed to being transparent with the public and with the council. We will have some more meetings regarding water, particularly because there has been a lot of concern about water capacity, you know, brown water, et cetera. We will have some more meetings where we will sort of highlight for the community what we are doing and what the plan is to address these issues, timelines, in a clear and concise manner. We'll make sure it puts on the website so people can find that information readily and have it available to them. So that's something that we will do moving forward as well. So that's, that's important to me. It's important to our team.
Great. So no further discussion, then we will put this to the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Last for legislation for action, we have Order FY 25-073. This is for the town clerk's salary. The Finance Committee voted 4-1 to recommend the salary change at their 7/21 meeting. Budget and Finance, we voted, this is back in June 26, to recommend with the salary change, which is now here in our agenda packet. Councilor Murphy, did you have anything to add to this? Any, any comments?
I'll just say that we did reduce the overall number from the original number that was submitted. And so this would, this would be roughly a $2,000 raise for our town clerk or 2.5%, which is close to in line with the rest of our employees for the town. And so I think this is a good justified amount raised for our town clerk.
Great, thank you. With that being said, do I have a motion for approval and a second for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion from councilors?
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Was there any change or effect on hours for the town clerk based on the change in monies?
I don't believe so, but if our town managers speak more to hours, it's an elected position. So if you could speak a little bit to that, if, if at all.
Yeah, I mean, elected position, technically, they can set whatever hours they determine for the staff underneath, the non-union employees or clerical staff, they are governed by our office hours, the town office hours, but I can't speak to any change in hours.
No problem, thank you. It's in our budget. I believe that initially, our town clerk elected to work more hours than it was originally in the previous budget. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but it was, it was more hours than it was originally in the budget from the previous year, so.
Thank you.
Could I, could I just take a moment as a former town clerk?
Yes.
To say that the town clerk comes in and works whenever the town clerk needs to work. So from my perspective, there were many times when I worked way more than regular amount of hours. I'm sure the current town clerk does as well. I know she does. And also, when a town clerk needs to take a day off, they can take a day off because it is an elected position. It's not, it's not one that we really own, that the council really owns.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunt. Appreciate that. Thank you. And we did have, what, three elections in the last year? So we've been, we've been busy in the town clerk office. Any further discussion?
I happen to know too, that the town clerk is in the office pretty close to every day at about 7 o'clock before the town hall opens. So I, I think she definitely does her due diligence and she also isn't, she doesn't take health insurance from us. So that's a real big savings if she did.
Certainly is.
Just a basic question. How does that line up with other town clerks in the area?
Yes, this is something, I'll let Councilor Murphy go after me, but yeah, we, we did a review of town clerks in the, in the region. It's a hard, it's a hard position to kind of compare because you have to go by, you know, municipal, you know, size and then some of them are elected and some of them are appointed. But that being said, this is, this is in line with the town clerks in, in our area to actually lower than some of the more immediate municipalities. So it's like Easton's town clerk is very, very well paid, but it's hard to compare municipality, municipality because the demands of the job are a little bit different depending on the situation. But Paul, did I miss anything?
No, I think that was great. I think one thing we looked at was population size of comparable towns and also budget size, total operating budgets of those towns. And to Councilor Loretty's point, it's really hard to take those data points and try to apply them in a comparable way to Bridgewater when you look at population and town budget to try to get them to align correctly and have the, the same form of government processes that we're doing here. So it was something we did look at extensively and talked about in the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. And she, I would tend to agree that I think she's on the, on the lower paid side if, if all things align comparable wise.
Great, thank you. Thank you for investigating that as well.
Anything further? All right, we have a motion on the table, so we'll go to a voice vote for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Great, motion carries. Okay, we are done with legislation for action. We'll move on to new business. Order FY 26-013, an order creating an ad hoc forensic audit committee for the town of Bridgewater. This was introduced by Councilor Ellenberg. I'll have her speak to, to this further.
Well, this I brought up because there has been persistent comments from constituents that things are not being done right. Now, I have looked at the initial contract and we are supposed to be earning certain revenues when there, we reach a 20% threshold in terms of the number of hours played and then more revenue when we reach a 30% revenue stream. Now, I'm curious to see the books. I would like to see, is Bridgewater getting that 20%? Are we getting that 30%? We are in dire need of revenue. I think that we should look into that and an ad hoc forensic audit committee can start with the golf course and then perhaps maybe go to ballot if the citizens would like a forensic audit on the school system. I've heard many people say that. So maybe people would vote whether or not to spend the money for such a thing. But at point, at this point, our town manager has said there is no money allocated for this committee. So it will be simply investigation of our committee, by our committee as best we can do. And perhaps if we turn up things, then perhaps funding could be allocated. We'll see.
Thank you. So as Councilor Ellenberg said here, this is looking to establish a, an ad hoc forensic audit committee, specifically looking at the golf course. So what I'll ask councilors, if I entertain a motion to refer this to Budget and Finance. Oh, please.
Okay, are you going to?
I was going to ask for a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and then discussion, but if you have to.
That's okay, that's all I was going to say anyway, so.
Do I, do I have a motion to refer to Budget and Finance Committee? And Finance Committee? Yes?
Yes.
Second.
And then discussion.
I.
You guys are tied.
No. You want to go first?
Yeah, I just, ad hoc committees. How many ad hoc committees ultimately we're going to create of this council? We have a Budget and Finance Committee. Personally, I don't want to put words in their mouth, having served in that position before, I think Budget and Finance could possibly do this role, okay? So I'm just bringing that up as, as a suggestion. I mean, we got a downtown revitalization ad hoc committee, we got a TIF ad hoc committee, we had, like, like, we, and we have a committee structure. Unfortunately, in our own council rules and in the administrative code, there's nothing that says what any of these committees do, other than Budget and Finance. There's nothing for CED, there's nothing for anything. And I think we need to probably correct that through legislation. I think we should look at everything. Auditing, I mean, the school committee is doing an audit. I think it needs to go a little bit further than what they are proposing to do, but it would be a good start, but I just wonder if it could be within the existing structure.
I'd like, could I make a comment on the same thing?
Here.
On exactly the same thing, because we already have committees. Some of our committees aren't even meeting or working yet. Let's use what we've got. I don't see any reason why we need to create more committees to do the regular work that's already there.
Thank you. Dr. Perry.
Thank you. I believe this order is a little overreaching for, for the council itself. Number one, again, since we do not have money for any type of forensic audit to be covered by the town, I don't think anyone on this, this panel is, is a forensic auditor in and of themselves. So again, I don't really like how this is worded and laid out. I think it's looking to pick on certain, you know, aspects with the town, whether it be the golf course, what have you. So I make a motion to, to lay this motion on the table.
I'll second.
So motion to the table, so for, so there's no discussion after that, so we'll just go ahead and go to a vote, motion to the table on this one. Debbie, may we have a roll call, please?
No.
Ms. Ellenberg?
No.
Ms. Strickles?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Loretty?
No.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
No.
Five, four.
Five in favor, four opposed. Motion passes.
Motion passes. The motion's tabled, or, or order is tabled.
Tabled.
Okay, we'll move on to citizen comments. Due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Anyone may come up at this time to speak for up to three minutes. Please note your name and address for the record.
Charles, County 303 Summer Street. If this gets moved to the Budget and Finance Committee for an ad to do a forensic audit on the towns, when will the town people or in case city people be notified and how will the Budget and Finance Committee go ahead and do this? Will there be a team set up to do that? And would that be in the next town meeting or city meeting? How is this going to happen? I noticed that there was a motion to move it forward to the Budget and Finance. Am I correct in saying that?
We actually just tabled it, so it is currently tabled at the moment.
Okay, so at the next meeting, will we be getting any information whether or not the Budget and Finance Committee will actually be taking over this audit?
I don't want to have too much back and forth, but it's tabled right now, so that it did not go to Budget and Finance Committee. did not go to Budget and Finance Committee. So, it would have to be brought back up in the, in the future at the council level, if, if at all.
Okay. Because it doesn't say anything about it being part of the Budget and Finance Committee. So, in the next new business, would it be saying something to the effect of an order creating an ad hoc forensic audit committee for the Budget and Finance Committee?
So, that you're in compliance with your own rules.
Yes.
You may want to offer to answer questions after the public meeting has concluded. It's probably the best way to deal with it at this point.
Yeah, I could answer a question at, at the end. That's okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Janet Hansen, Pleasant Street. It's kind of what I was wondering. It's tabled, meaning it's dead right now. But, how, going forward, how does somebody go ahead and look, and I'm gonna pick on the golf course because that's what came up, and it is interesting. I've always wondered, how is the town getting money from the golf course? I've been wondering that since it was formed. But, going forward, how does, how does the town, who's going to look more closely at the golf course to make sure we're getting more money? Regardless if it's an ad hoc committee or not, it would be nice to know that somebody is going to take the time to look at that particular one I'm gonna pick on because everybody would like to know, are we making money on this? Are we spending money for somebody else to manage it? I never understood why it was, and my husband's the same, why it passed on to somebody else to manage and have the town have to spend money, pay somebody else to do what the town should be doing. We could save money if we're not paying somebody else to manage it. So, I would like somebody to look at that, ad hoc or not. Somebody needs to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Flaherty, 468 Forest Street. I've been the Commissioner of Recreation when Mike Dutton gave the management company at the golf course the contract. Before that, I helped, I was one of four guys that spent two years building the clubhouse. Every nail that went in, we, four of us built it, like a bond raisin'. Okay? Charlie Simons told me, average that the town made for, after the mortgage was paid off in 20 years was $440,000. Plus, the town took another $135,000 to do the payroll for eight people. So, if you add those two figures up, 440 and 135, that's a lot of money. Now, the Inspector General for the state has said one of the biggest rip-offs for towns is management companies running golf courses. Okay? The Inspector General said that. He suggested that every night, someone from the town and someone from the management company do the books and make the deposits together, not just the management company. All right? There's a lot of area here with the management company, the golf course ripping off the town. A financial audit, a forensic audit is the way to go. There's a lot of money that's not being given to the town. I don't know how much it was given this year by the management company. The other thing is, the golf course, the way it's structured, is not friendly to any people from Bridgewater. All right? Let's go back in history. That golf course was built by volunteers from this town, Ronnie Adams especially. But, there was a commission of 16 guys that put in all kinds of time and hours to build that. And that was supposed to be for recreation. There was supposed to be snow skiing in the wintertime. And the rates for Bridgewater people were supposed to be kept down. That's not the case. It's not being done that way. The second thing I'd like to bring up, I was here a couple of, couple of meetings ago, and I invited every one of you people to come down to my shop where hazardous waste was dumped on my land by the contractor who was being supervised by the town and a licensed site professional. Not one of you people came down. And you're supposed to be the representative of the townspeople. You should try to find out the truth of what's going on. It's a disgrace. You're supposed to be representing the people of the town. I'm out, out in left field somewhere, and no one is showing any concern about what's going on. I'm trying to rectify this without suing the town. But, I've already spent quite a lot of money on myself to, to rectify this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Without getting in the audit part of it, after you go over 975,000 or something, the town gets 20%. So, when you allow the golf course to go up $1,000, when the contract said they only go up...
I'm sorry to interrupt. You did it before. Can you do name and address again for the record?
I'm sorry. James Campbell, 144 Laurel Street. Thank you. Why would you allow them to go up to 2,000, which would be $1,000, which you would only get $200 for? Why wouldn't you call them in your office and say, "We'll let you go up to 2,000, but we want 600 of it"? You know, things like that. These are just things you can see without even figuring anything out. You know, there's a lot of things that happened. What he said about, I was on the golf committee, and I was 38 years in recreation. We ran the, we ran it, let Cochran, Jennings, and Mullins run it for two years so we could learn how to do it. Then we took over. He was right. We were paying the full note on the bond, 466, I think it was, 135. So, like he said, that brings it up. We also were paying for the employees' benefits. So, we're up over $700,000 we were paying. Now, you don't pay the, for the bond anymore. It's all paid off. And that was supposed to be recreation to help with stuff, anything you do with the golf course. But, it's no longer there. But, I mean, just without a review of it, if you want to know how to run a golf course, the Inspector General came out in 2009 and told you, "The guy running the cash register shouldn't be counting the money. The money should be deposited by a town employee." They have all these rules, they say, should go, three-year contracts. Don't ever go over three. Someone walks out of town and gives a five-year extension, that ain't due up till next year? Don't you wait till you get close and figure out? I mean, golf is taking off. It's a lot of money. People are making tons of money. So, I mean, I don't know if you need a forensic audit, but just a casual look at it and go down. They're supposed to give you monthly reports. After three years, they say they're supposed to pay for an audit themselves. So, I mean, there's a lot of things you can do without going out and doing forensic audit, but at least do a simple one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Andy Hoy Thomas, 9 Trinity Circle. I wanted to thank you all for voting to use the stabilization fund. And I watched the new town manager nod when they gave you the year we're gonna need. And an override's gonna be put forth again. I look forward to collaborating with you all in getting, whether we need an override, study, collaboration with the working group, or what have you. Our children are gonna need more. They deserve better now. And we're gonna need to work together. So, I just want to thank you for voting yes on this for this year. Thanks.
Thank you.
John Donner, 261 South Street. If I could just jump ahead a little bit and speak to the MBTA issue as it relates to water. As I understand it, right now, the town has approved for 15 units per acre. And currently, it might come under consideration in September to move that up to 27 and a half units per acre. And, you know, most of this, the discussion through the meeting is, you know, water. And, you know, water rates have gone up. And what are we gonna do about the water? And it's, it's all you really hear in town. So, you know, I just don't really understand how, as a town, we would want, even want to think about going from 15 to 27 and a half. That just doesn't make any sense. There's a water ban out there. Any recreational use of water by any residents in town right now are at risk of a, a $50 fine. And now, we're gonna increase, potentially increase the units. They're gonna build per acre for a state mandated law. And the, the legislators who made this law aren't here. And they don't live in town. They don't understand the challenges we're facing as a town. And I don't even know where we would have, how, how are we gonna even have the resources for the 15 units that are already approved? And I think, you know, as, as a town, we should even consider walking that back. All right. Thank you very much.
Would anyone else, anyone else like to come up and speak? Okay. Thank you all for coming up to speak tonight. We'll now move on to council comments. I'll start with Councilor Lindy.
First of all, I just want to thank all the citizens that came out. You are listened to, even if we can't answer you at the time. As far as the golf course issue goes, we have a new town manager that we can ask for information on that. And I think that's exactly what we should do. I guess I heard the contract's up next year. He just got here. Let's give him an opportunity to dig into that with the finance team, get us some numbers, and maybe everybody will feel better. There is a recreation commission. Maybe they should be more involved. I don't know enough about that to comment on it, but I heard some good information here tonight. So, I just think we should try to move forward with that and get some information, get some answers. Obviously, we know we're gonna have to really work hard on the budget for next year and deal with expenses and everything. I wanted to say, and I don't usually share personal stuff, but my grandson's mother decided to move him out of the Bridgewater Random School District. He's a bright student, a 3.8 average, taking AP classes, and none of those courses were gonna be available to him next year. So, they moved him to another school district. I don't particularly think it's wise. I still think we have a good school district. But, and I didn't get a vote. I'm not his mother. But, it's kind of sad to see. It's been a good school system. I know people here graduated from that school system. I graduated from Brockton High. And we gotta figure out how to fund the schools properly, how to get the state to change the formula. I commend my fellow councillor for going up and testifying, Paul Murphy, you know, about it. And we just have to work hard. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a point of order before we continue. I believe that the tabling was out of order. We voted as a committee to send that out. And tabling on our end doesn't do anything because we already moved it from our committee. So, I'm gonna make a motion to pick that item up off the table because I feel like it was inappropriate. And it's also an inappropriate use of tabling because essentially what we're doing is killing this with tabling. So, I would like you to consider that motion, Mr. President, either to pick it up off the table. And then we can take a vote on that again to just maintain the process of sending that to committee, which we actually voted for. Or, maybe we could ask legal counsel as well on that and defer.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not familiar as to why it was, it was out of order. Can, could you explain that?
Did you take a vote to send to committee?
Yes.
Had it already been voted?
There wasn't a vote to send to committee.
I didn't, I didn't hear a vote to send to committee.
There was a first and a second for discussion.
So, we had a first and a second to vote on that?
Right.
You had a first and second and...
Then my motion came.
Yeah, a motion to lay on the table takes precedence.
Official vote, okay.
Takes precedence.
Okay, sure.
So, it was in line. It was appropriate.
Okay.
And it can't be brought up until the, the next meeting?
Yeah, you, you made a motion to the table during the discussion.
Right.
Okay.
But, we can't bring it up off the table until a, for, a future meeting.
Well, you wouldn't bring it up off, it's already been tabled.
Right. But, I'm saying if someone were to make that motion...
There's nothing, but there's no, there's nothing to...
You can pick it from the same, from the table on the same meeting.
Exactly.
Yes, yeah.
But, you're beyond, yeah, you're, you're basically beyond that at this point.
At the, you can do it at the same meeting.
Yes.
Correct? Yeah. The whole, you know, if the sprinklers go off and we're in the middle of doing something, you can vote the table, come back in the room and take it off the table. Okay.
I, I don't think we're in the same discussion at this point.
No, we're not.
But, yeah.
We're not.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilor Hunt, I think we're out, onto you.
Okay. I want to thank all the people who come to listen and to speak. I remember times when there were only like four or five people sitting out there. And so, it's really wonderful to know that people are paying attention. And I think one of the really good things that you could do, because I've read some of our minutes sometimes, and not everything, because everybody's saying so much when they're up there, not everything makes it into the minutes. If you could write them out, write what you're gonna say out ahead of time and just pass it off to Debbie when you get done, then she'd have a copy of everything that was said, and that could be included in our minutes. So, when I go back and look at it, I'm not trying to guess who said what that I don't quite remember if I didn't take fast enough notes from it. So, that was what I was gonna say. I was gonna say it's great news about the website improvement. That's incredible because as somebody who sat with that website for years, it really needs a lot of improving. And, and I wanted to say, I usually meet about every couple of weeks with citizens here after hours. And I will be doing that again tomorrow from 4:30 to 6:30 in 201, either A or B, depending on if somebody else is meeting in A, I'll be in B. And then I wanted to tell you what happens when those things, those things, when people come to talk. Someone came in last time and complained to me about things that he was worried about down at the nip. And he said, "Sometimes there are boats there. Sometimes there are people swimming, even though there are signs up that say no swimming. There's a big hunk out of the boat ramp going in." He wanted to know who's in charge of the parking and the boat ramp and the, and the nip. So, I've done some research and worked with an old friend from when I used to work in state government. And we found all the documentation saying who owns it and who can do what with it. And I think we're gonna be able to get some work done to make sure that we can take care of some of those problems. So, we're not endangering any children's lives by boat propellers when boats come in and people are swimming. And around the backside, maybe by your house, I don't know. But, there's a place where it's only maybe two and a half feet deep, and there's rocks there where a boat coming around there could be in serious trouble. So, try to get some of those things straightened out. And that's what happens when citizens will come and talk to you about something that I didn't know anything about. So, I'm happy about that. And I think, I think that's about it, about enough for me to say.
Thank you. Councilor Murphy?
Yeah, just three quick things. First, as it pertains to the golf course, I do want to say that we did have a discussion about this at the June 17 Budget and Finance Meeting. We went in depth about the, the golf course, and our finance director and acting town manager at the time presented us with a PowerPoint presentation that really laid out the revenues and the users, and it looked at the last five years. It was amazing information and presentation. We also learned that the golf course was producing revenue that was being put back into the operating budget for the town for the first time ever, I believe, over the last two years. And so, I realize we've had a change in leadership, but maybe if our new town manager could work with our finance director to get that information to the Recreation Board, I think it would be immensely helpful. There was a lot of good information in there. If you have access to YouTube, you could even go back and look at the meeting itself, too. But, that was a concern back in June. And so, I asked those questions, and we got a great presentation then. And I, I think the Recreation Board deserves it as well, too. The next thing I'll say is the MBTA piece. I did ask, again, tonight for that grants piece, what we've been awarded. I'd like to understand very clearly what we in Bridgewater are getting or could get, being in compliance with the MBTA, that towns like Milton or Middleborough aren't getting because they're not in compliance. So, we voted on this two years ago. I supported it two years ago because I was told our town would benefit from it. We're two years later. I want to know how we benefited from it. And hopefully, we can lay that out for folks to educate them on that. And then the final thing I'll say is, this past Monday, I had an opportunity to walk through our new fire station with the project manager. It is an incredible space. And I am excited for our fire department, for our town. We're prepared for the next, I think he said, 50 years for anything that happens here in Bridgewater. But, our fire, our fire department deserves that space. There's also some great public space in there, meeting rooms and different breakout training rooms as well, too, that I think will really help our town in a great way. We don't advertise that very widely yet. And I'm sure, or I hope we will, once that station's fully built. But, one it is, hopefully, the beginning of December, as I've been told over and over again, we have a good opening, grand opening, and we can get some members of the public in there to see that space. Because it's, it truly is incredible. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Perry?
Thank you. Again, to echo the sentiments of, of Council Murphy, again, there's been some presentations that have been made before the council before in regards to the golf course. I did bring some numbers today just to let some of the public know because they might not be aware. And again, I thought, I thought this information is on the town website. But, if it's not, again, I'd like to see it get on there. But, just in FY23, the town realized 344,000 from the agreement with Trune, 404, almost 405,000 in FY24. In FY25, we have a number of 465,000. So, that number's going up each and every year. And again, it's... So that number is going up each and every year. And again, it's one aspect of the town that the town doesn't have to run. And it's monies that the town can count on in their budget every year. Again, I appreciate all the work that Golf Commission has done in setting this up over the years, all the hard work that they did from day one. None of that should be discounted. But there was, you know, going back to a presentation that was done from FY '02 to FY '15 of over 14 years, there was only four years where income exceeded expenses, and there was many years where the town had to, you know, make up for loss of funds. So again, I do think it's going in a good direction. I certainly am not opposed to, again, reviewing the numbers if it's necessary. But it's definitely, I think, going in a better financial direction than it has in the past. Secondarily, I know a lot of the talk going on, and we'll get into more in our meetings in September regarding the density. And this is certainly a hot-button topic for a lot of people. I think some information being passed around on social media is inaccurate. Basically, our Form-based code and our paperwork that deals with this basically states that we haven't allowed residential density of 18 units per acre, okay? The state has a minimum floor of 15 units per acre. But based on the decisions of our planning board, could grant bonus density depending on certain aspects of up to 26 units per acre. That doesn't mean that everyone automatically gets 26 or 27 units per acre. So for those that have questions, go onto the website, look up the Form-based code, look up all of our information regarding this, and get educated. Don't just count on information that's being passed out on Facebook. Outside of that, that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Strigels?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank, as I always do, everyone who comes out and engages, not only during meetings, but also via email. I had a lot of very productive conversations over the last 72 hours, so I appreciate that with a lot of constituents. And I just wanted to let everyone know that the first TIF ad hoc meeting did take place in between our meetings on 7/23. And Mr. Cormier, the representative for the Broad Street Project, did come and provide us some updates and give us the ground floor of the starting point of all of our conversations. And we will be meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM in the conference room for our second meeting. And Bob Ruley will be in attendance for that via Zoom. So if you are interested in attending, it's a hybrid meeting, so you can either come in person or hop on the Zoom link. We do offer two public comment periods, so please feel free to speak and give us your opinion. And our whole goal is to be as comprehensive and as mindful as possible while still understanding that time is of the essence when financial pictures are involved. So we have to be sensitive to not only that, but we also need to be sensitive to what the residents in the town also want. So I'm encouraging everyone to attend, and I look forward to seeing you.
Thank you. Councilor Ellenberg?
Yes. Thank you for everyone who's been paying attention to issues. Thank you for coming out, and that's all for now.
Thank you. Councilor Kennedy?
I also want to thank the public for your involvement. We need that involvement. And the more people that get involved, the more business we can get done with the better input from the public. And I'm also going to say that I'm happy that we are able to move forward on water and sewer as these are the primary concerns in town. So organizing that, putting us on a better track going forward, I think, is the good, is the right thing to do. So I'm glad that we were able to come together and agree on that, as well as something else in here. The supplemental override, again, I don't like doing it that way. We discussed that at length. I'm not going to go too deep into it. But I'm glad that we were able to come together, discuss it, and have a productive discussion, and generally agree on the direction the town's moving. I also look forward to the questions being answered from our town manager as best as your ability, and a lot of those are questions that a lot of people in town do have from all the councillors. So I look forward to those answers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice President McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. I voted no on the golf because I can't pay $50,000 for an audit. And I know this is dear and close to your heart. So being on the finance and budget, I'm glad working with you. I'm an avid golfer, so I can have insight on that. I can get the information that we got from Laurie. And we should go down and take a tour of the golf course, which I like to do, and the bar and all that. I do want to find out more information because the residents want to, and you've been talking about this since you become a council. So I'll be more than willing to work with you on this. I was going to explain that, but it was tabled. So I'm willing, I'm working with you, okay? All right.
All right, thank you. As for myself, thank you to Councilor Hunt for digging up the agreement regarding the NIP and who has jurisdiction over that area. I did review it. I didn't have a chance to thank you, so I want to thank you publicly for that. It is, I think, from like the 1980s. So we'll just double-check to make sure that that's still the most updated version of that. But thank you for looking that up. I live on the lake, and, you know, safety is a huge concern over there. So again, thank you. And Council McGrath, I'll also echo your sentiments. I'm happy to dive into the golf course issue as well. We did do that in June, and I think that that issue amongst a number of issues should be looked at. And it's something that, you know, we're willing and looking forward to doing. So I'd be happy to do that work with you. I want to thank the councillors for coming to a special meeting tonight. I'm glad they were able to meet for the intended purposes of passing the supplemental budget for our schools. I know that it's not the number that they wanted in the beginning, but I think that it's a step in the right direction. And like I've been saying for a while now, the work for FY '27 has already begun. I'm looking forward to working with our new town manager to make strides forward for our community and our schools. We will be back here a week from today, so I know, I know it's summertime, but we knew going into this that we'd all be busy. So thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you for residents for coming out this evening as well. I appreciate all of your input and your participation. With all that being said, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.